Absolutely. Once we get through this, you won't see it again.
All right, cameras on.
Well, you still need to prepare to do that?
Not when you're...
All right. I think I tickled a slot. Let's start. Joe, with the pledge, you're going to play?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We would like to welcome our new trustees here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jerry, good to see you. With that, we'll open up the public hearing for the substation. Jerry, must have questions. That's why you're here, correct?
You know, I wanted to hear what you had to say about it.
Okay. Well, let me give you some history. Why we need a new substation. The current substation is forty years old. That's a benchmark for a substation is forty years. Especially having been pretty heavily loaded back in the day when Bondwell and, you know, all the different companies that took over over here. You're familiar with over here.
Oh, yeah.
They ran that system pretty hard. There used to be another half of that current substation that we dismantled and took it out of service. It was the old Delta system. When we built the new station over on Church Street, that was eliminated. That was really, that would have been seventy year old now, probably, so.
So, do you have the numbers here, Joe, what we're going to spend on this?
We got a, we don't, we still are going out for bids for a lot of the equipment, Jerry. The bond resolution was for three point four million. For the substation.
Over how many years?
Thirty. Thirty years. We're...
Is our present equipment paid for?
Yes.
There's no long-term debt load on the system now?
No. We've rebuilt our entire system. For this day, for this time, to a higher voltage. We need to go to a higher voltage also. The industrial park being as far away as it is at the lower voltage we're at at forty-one sixty volts. It's right at the end of what it can handle, so we're going to a higher voltage of twelve thousand four hundred and seventy volts.
Is the entire industrial park in the village?
It's in the town, but it's in our electric franchise area.
So, is any of it in the village?
No.
And why are we spending our money? To have them there?
Again, they're in our franchise area. We have to service anything in our franchise area. That was the Blue Farm back in the day. And years ago, there was a big court undertaking. National Grid tried to take over that whole park. And through federal courts, it was determined that that was actually the Village of Virgins franchise area, that Blue Farm.
Well, how far south does our 19?
We go to Fred Ely. He's our last customer.
He's in the village, or he's in the franchise?
He's in the town, yes, in our franchise area. And we go out to the gun club. But the village limit is at the fire hall, but our franchise goes out to the gun club.
And we have no choice in that matter. We have to service that area.
Yes.
And are they charged the same rates that we are charged in the village?
It depends on if they're a commercial customer or Expo International is looking to go up in our park. They would be an industrial customer, so they would be charged the same as Nortera, the big food processing plant here. And the other customers are all commercial accounts, and they're charged, I believe, the same as our commercial accounts here in the village.
And how does that compare to the residential rates?
The industrial rate is running at a slightly lower rate.
It's point oh one nine three is the base rate, and then the commercial rate's point oh four six one, and then the residential rate is point oh four seven nine. And then you add the PPAC and the rec-zec number into that. That's in our tariff.
The recs and the zecs are the state mandated.
State mandated.
Renewable energy credits and...
So, are the village residents subsidizing that franchise area in any way?
I wouldn't say we're subsidizing it.
How are the village residents going to pay for this bond issue?
Well, with Expo coming, should they come up to the park, there's going to be a sizable amount of revenue they're going to generate. Nortera is a good percentage of our revenue to keep our system to have what we have here now. And Expo would be even more so because there'd be twelve months out of the year compared to six months. Here's would be a lot steadier load.
So, everybody in the franchise area will finance the bond?
Everyone will pay, yes. All the customers...
How is the bond, how is the bond going to be distributed, paying for the bond? How is that going to be distributed, Joe?
Well, again, we...
I mean, will it be a line item on our taxes is what I mean, as an exemplar. How is that going to be financed?
Corey, start better than you are. So, the taxes and the village taxes have nothing to do with the electric, so we can't combing all those funds or the revenues. So, the electric budget will completely finance the project. So, it'll have nothing to do with the property tax or anything in the general budget. So, the substation's not just for the industrial park, you know, as Joe said, it's forty years old, so whether, you know, Expo will...
But he also used, he discussed the franchise area increasing their needs, so obviously, it is a player.
Well, it's definitely a player. What would we be doing in the substation anyway? Either way, we had to do the substation. And with Expo going there, it just happens to coincide with the substation, and it gives us the opportunity, because they're going up there, GCEC is looking into New York State to reach.
Fast New York.
Fast New York, so we might be able to get a grant from the state for almost around one million dollars to subsidize the substation. So, there's actually, you know, a good timing there.
Well, how many other customers, counting or not counting, it doesn't matter, Expo, are there in that franchise area now?
Just in the industrial park.
Well, the franchise area?
The whole thing.
Primarily over there.
I mean, total is about six hundred and seventy meters.
Seventy-nine-ish meter, metering.
Customers total, being residential, commercial.
I'm asking about the franchise area, not the entire.
Right, but the franchise area is our entire area.
I see.
So, it includes that.
Do you know, up hand, how many individual units are in the park over here?
There's Liberty, Craft Canary, Pink Parkers.
Hunter Bus, Ad Tech.
Hunter Bus, Ad Tech, IAA.
Yes, I think.
Maybe six.
Yeah, six. But one thing to consider too is, like Joe mentioned, Bondwell. So, Bondwell, their power usage is actually generates seventy percent of the village's revenue for the electric budget.
Say that again, please, I'm sorry.
So, Bondwell, which is now Nortera, their power consumption, what they use, generates seventy percent of the revenue for the village electric. So, if you really kind of look at it, if anybody's subsidizing this, it's them because they're paying seventy percent. And then when Expo comes on, like Joe said, they're going to be, you know, up there with two, so the revenue they create will also pay. So, the lion's share is going to be really between the two of them. And after that, you know, like, I think probably Liberty Pumps, usage-wise. So, those consumers who use the most generate the most revenue, and they're going to be really paying most towards that.
And what's the timing again then on this whole project? You're in the process now of doing what?
So, right now, we're getting the funding set.
The funding.
Right, and then the engineering is pretty much done. You know, the initial layout of the substation. And the next step will be to order the transformers and go out for bid for the construction firm who's going to install.
So, there'll be one bid for the contractor for the construction? And how many vendor bids will there be? Just the one?
There would be another bid, Jerry, for all the other electrical equipment that's necessary. Voltage regulators, things like that.
And what's the timing on all that then?
For the equipment to come in or for the start?
Well, in other words...
About a year and a half, put it that way. Up to two years, but about a year and a half.
So, it'll be a year and a half before we know what this is going to cost us truly, before the bids come in? Is that fair to say, or am I missing something?
Yes, I would say it's fair to say. We don't know exactly. Engineers have done many substations recently and have a really good ballpark.
And they give estimates?
Yes.
And that figure, Joe, was three point?
Four.
Four mil.
Another thing, Jerry, we've contacted the power authority also. I don't know if you're familiar, we get preference power from Niagara Falls, our allotment. And our allotment, with what Expo's projecting for power usage, our preference power would be increased also by two point three meg, which is huge.
That'd be a good thing.
So, that's going to, there's a lot of variables here, the grant, the preference power, actual cost when it all comes in, and the revenue that Expo is going to generate to see what the final impact would be.
I'm curious, and this is off the subject a little bit. Has Niagara Mohawk or any of the large utilities ever tried to pick off those customers?
Well, they tried to get the whole park.
Yeah.
Like I said, but it was a federal court.
Oh, I see. When you said the whole park, they wanted all the...
They wanted all that, yes. They fought us in court. Jim McConnell was mayor then. And the court ruled that it was the Village of Virgins franchise area, so then Grid had to, you know, back off. They were building poles across the 490.
Really?
Yeah, they already had them in, and they had to take them out.
When the school went to the co-gen facility, boy, they were brutal. There was no partway, it was cut the line.
Yeah.
You know, and I was just curious how that was playing out.
So, again, there's a lot of variables to where the final cost will come in, but...
It'll be fun to watch.
Yeah, we definitely need, you know, it's time. And with Expo wanting to go up there, the alternative, if they can't come here, then they may move to Wisconsin and take those jobs with them. So, that's why the county economic development is trying to help too to keep them here, you know, in our park, keep those jobs here.
Well, how are they enticing them, Joe?
Well, I'm sure they gave them tax breaks. I know they gave them tax breaks.
On the town's behalf?
Probably the town taxes.
The town also?
Probably.
Yeah.
You don't know?
Yeah, I don't know the town, or maybe, and probably the school too. My understanding from talking to Inc. Ernie, that a lot of the, pretty much everybody up there is on some sort of tax credit.
Yeah.
For ten years or so.
They use, you know, the incentive to keep the industry here rather than move out.
And these tax credits are administered by who then? Who offers them?
GCEC does something. They kind of prove it and facilitate it to some degree. I mean, they did with the Liberty Pumps expansion, one of the original ones. The one thing I just want to add is the preference power that Joe talked about, you know, the two point three. What we get right now for that is only like two point seven, so we're going to possibly double that. So, that's, it's a huge one for us, and it will help decrease the rates for customers.
And that's, that's a goal, that's a given now, or they're hoping to?
It's based on Expo and the jobs that they're bringing in, so as long as they go in, they sign, and they bring in the jobs that they sign. Liberty Pumps also is on the same program, but because they're smaller and the power usage is less, we only get half a meg for that, but...
What's the timing on the whole Expo package?
They want to be up and running, they say within a year, but I think that's pretty out there. I think two years for them is more likely for them to be up and running and built.
Well, no, I mean, as far as when they lock into it. When's the, how far away is the agreement where they're committed?
I would, well, I was led to believe as early as the end of this week, they could sign. They've already hired a developer, and they actually contracted a developer now to oversee the project up here. It's a forty million dollar project. I believe thirty million was for the building. It's a two hundred thousand square foot building, and then ten million dollars in additional investment in machinery. Where they are now in buyer, they just can't function properly. I mean, they pretty much got to unplug something to plug something else in and move this out of the way, so...
And they, Joe, you expect they will make their final commitment this week?
I'm hoping so, as I was led to believe that it's very, very close, okay? And like I said, they hired a developer to oversee their project, so...
Sounds good.
Yeah, especially if you get that grant from the state, you know, getting a million dollars to, you know, save. Because that'll go, the long-term debt goes on the electric budget, and then it gets figured into everything. So, we haven't gone out for a rate increase in over twenty years. And if we get that hydro and Expo revenue and the debts that as low as we're hoping, then we might not have to go for foreseeable future.
Go out, Courtney?
Well, that's the term we use for going to the Public Service Commission, asking for the increase in rates. That's the last thing we wanted to do, hoping that with all this going on, we don't have to for another long time.
Now, is this digger Derrick part of this whole package or separate?
It's a separate item, yeah. That was something that we ordered back maybe three years ago, and just taking this bottom to get built and come in.
Do we have one now?
Yes. Yeah, that one's almost, that's what, fifteen years old?
Yes, it's fifteen years old.
Do municipalities share them?
We do, Jerry, but the problem with the diggers, you need more than one most, a lot of the time. It's called a cut and a kick when you want to change poles.
Yeah.
You actually hook one digger Derrick onto it, and you hold it there, and you get a chainsaw, and you cut the bottom of it. And then you move it slightly over, and then the other digger comes in, pulls the stump out, you know, the little pole, and then they auger, and then you put the new pole back in. You do that when there's gas lines or things in the way that, you know, you don't want to mess with them and have damage. So, sometimes, or it could be the concrete or other factors, but it's whenever you have a cut and a kick, you need two of them. So, when we do that here, we'll have Churchville come over, and if they do it, we go there with ours because you need two. And it's used for other things too. It's not just for setting poles. It's got a lot of lifting capacity, so our big transformers, the pad-mounted transformers. It's also used to lift those into place. We use it to unload the poles, load the poles when they come in, you use it. So, it's got a lot more uses than just digging a hole in the ground and setting a pole.
And what are the numbers on that?
Three hundred and seventy thousand.
They're financing three forty.
We actually started to go after this digger about three years ago. That's all it was taking to get it. Churchville is just ordering one now, and theirs is well over four hundred. I think it was four hundred and sixty thousand. That's almost have gone up. Price of equipment now is just incredible.
Just sit here and watch what Expo will be selling their equipment for. I mean, it's astronomical.
Yeah, they're international too, you know, they're all over the world.
Yeah.
Another thing comes to mind, why we need this. The underground lines up in the industrial park, when that park was built years and years ago, they actually put small conductors in the ground. It's only one ought copper. In an industrial park, you would generally use, you know, like five hundred copper, you know, so you could get a lot more amps on it. So, right now, we're at the point where we can't even feed, we had to split it in half. So, we got two feeds into that park. One goes down Buffalo Road, and one goes down Lake here. So, we can feed it from two different ways, but we're not able now to, we had to split the load in the park. So, say if a tree was to come down here on Lake, we can't backfeed that whole park anymore because we can't get enough amps. There's too many amps to put on that one ought wire. By going to the higher voltage, we can get three times the amperage on those conductors. Higher the voltage, the less the amps. So, it's necessary. Not only that, in the summer, we're having voltage problems up there. A lot of air conditioning load up there. And, you know, when the heat, heat and electric don't get along real well.
No.
It's fine in the winter, but in the summer, with all the air conditioning load, the amps are jumping up and the voltage suffers. So, at twelve four seventy, the voltage would be much better up there.
So, just go back briefly. Bondwell has sold this plant or how?
They're forty percent, I believe. They still own forty percent of the plant. Nortera bought them out, but they still have forty percent.
And where's Nortera based?
In France.
It's still a Canadian, French-Canadian company.
And has their usage changed over, in other words, as you talked earlier, they've always been a summertime user, not so much in wintertime? Is that still the case?
Oh, yeah, they definitely, they're a high summer user, and in the wintertime, they use very, very little. But since Bondwell's taken over and Nortera, they've kind of, they've gone through the plan and just some energy efficiency things, but they're also bringing more and more product in and working a little bit longer. So, they might not be using more at once, but they're using more and longer per period.
They've done, they've done energy efficiency over there too, to cut their load down. They've actually cut down quite a bit from what years ago. There was a time when they were using so much, National Grid would call, before we had the West Sweden line built, National Grid would call, you know, it was a line in the air, and they'd call me, hey, you got to shut some load because we're going to shut you off because, you know, the lines couldn't handle it. So, I'd get the call over, say, hey, you got to shut some stuff off because grids, you know, an alarm's going off, that grid saying, hey, you're exceeding the limit here. So, that line is, you know, is all heavy duty now, you know that. All the way from Sweden to here, it's been all rebuilt. The substation's the only kind of weak link we have right now. Our whole system has been upgraded to the higher voltage, twelve four seventy. All the transformers have been replaced over the last few years. So, we're ready when this new voltage comes available here. All we got to do is get some mutual aid in from other systems, and get trucks on all the different streets here in the village and start just turning a tap on a transformer. Cut the power, shut, turn the tap, and it's ready for the higher voltage because they're dual-rated transformers. And that's what we've replaced all our infrastructure of transformers with. So, we're ready. Everything's been built to the higher standards, the fifteen KV standards. So, everything's, and our, the engineer was amazed when he saw what we have here and how ready we are for this project.
Good. Did I, was there going to be any conversation tonight about the sewer system? Did I see there's not?
That's next month.
Next month, okay. Come back next month.
Uh, no, sewer is May.
Sewer's May?
May, yeah. Twenty-fourth is the chessboard.
Thank you. I didn't expect to have any...
Jerry, I'm glad for the questions. If you have any other questions, you think of anything, either call me or Courtney.
You know, sometime, and I would, I'd love to go through this building again.
Yeah.
I really would.
Jerry, you still own this building?
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
Oh, my goodness. How are you, Joe?
The village purchased the building.
If he's staying, I'm going. But I, as an example, I imagine they upgraded a lot of the electric here.
Oh, yeah, it's all rewired now.
I ran thousands of feet of wire.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometime I'll go for a tour.
Yeah, the apartments, all, one's been remodeled.
Yeah, the two in the back, one has just lightly been refreshed, I'd say, when it's been modeled, and the big one been bad.
Have you taken any heat from the other landlords as far as competing with their tax dollars? I always wondered about that.
No, actually not.
Seems to me it's a slippery slope because, you know, if I had apartments down the street and had to compete with my own dollars at the village. But...
I heard you sold this for a song, Jerry.
If I'd have known about how much they were going to spend on it, I'd have charged.
I remember Mom's Mall over there on the side.
I didn't realize the village ran into a bottomless pit of money when they started working on this thing.
Oh, my God.
I'm good then, thank you.
You're welcome, Jerry. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Jerry.
Okay, motion to close the hearing on the substation.
Make a motion to close the hearing in the substation.
Or second?
I'll second the motion.
With your favor.
I...
O, Jerry? Digger Derrick, public hearing here.
We didn't see the pledge or anything.
Is this a few minutes? That's good. Hi, George.
Hey, good to see you, Joe.
Good to see you.
Mayor, excuse me. We're quiet. We're not here in the chamber.
Jerry, every time I hear Peter Frampton, I think of your son.
Oh, boy, yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Who is that?
That was something.
Most of those are the exact same ones that they're...
We chase them off. Are you going to motion something there? We're just opening the course.
Ben, talk to Cruz. I know, Ben, you must be...
So, he's just starting to respond to my...
Well, I just got back from Key West, visiting Christopher's.
I'm sure he's going to... Paying tax, so I was looking. Kind of just coming through. Questions I ask Courtney.
You want really to sign him up?
No, you, well, you signed him up, then you...
But, yeah, my family just doesn't just connect with me anymore.
What you've been according to?
That Cruz.
Absolutely. Checks and balances. And she's a really useful...
Oh, really? The baseball team, the New York?
I know it's tough for you because you're coming in with...
Yeah, but a lot of the New York Yankee baseball.
We're not voting against it.
I tell people, if you ask them, they always...
Well, I should say, in the... Well, I should say, in the, in the new business, we're gonna be able to do something, but it's pending something.
So what do you plan to do?
Hopefully allow the question that Jerry asked. That, you know, give you some information.
What's the credit lines for the two thousand? That's just a program, each year three?
Every, 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 yeah.
Full credit or something?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they all have, uh, credit.
Now you said.
April to April, or, like, a year, twelve months?
For the, for credit only? But, uh, just already, they work, just have their, their personal credit card, they're the next one, basically.
Can they, is there, like, you know, those, uh, over two hundred or something to sign off on? Are we afraid?
Yeah, so they have a present.
Can we see them there every day? Say, but they're gonna spend time here, they're coming here.
They're allowing seventy-five dollars per day for a boy.
It's a small town, isn't it? Hello Grace, how are you?
It's hard to comprehend.
Very good.
Hey Grace?
Hi Grace.
How you doing?
I'm doing, I'm great.
Good to see you here, it's been a while.
Yes, yes.
So something like this, is there not, you've worked with it?
Which one is it?
Uh, tree top products, original necklace stolen.
Right, yeah, so we...
What's going on with the can for the deal?
Um, and I have, uh, all that back.
Good story?
But, and I had to just redo a front of claims to the bank.
Getting better?
So we're gonna recapture shag, it's gonna go out to, to them. So again, this is our player to, um, and then, we should be getting credit back.
Did somebody, like, in the kitchen?
So, they, they sold the shag, and that's re, renewed, made, uh, out of, uh...
Nothing, right, out of the ordinary.
Wow.
And, you know, her name walked in, she sort of skinned it, dropped it off at the post office.
So it's somewhere, somewhere.
So, the long deal.
Isn't it certain, or?
No more goes out.
My guess, there's probably something to that.
Nothing's been signed yet, yeah.
So there is a risk that, that the mortgage debt cost, or it's likely that it will?
Well, as long as the bubble doesn't burst.
In credit?
Which can...
I, I don't know how that works, so, until I see it in our bank. I will be a little doubtful. But yes, it's a good chance.
I can't believe this rule is pretty much... Did you see what Phil Delance has seen? So, some of those things are pretty simple. Fifty...
Fifteen. This is in the financials house. They throw that to, um, old Coleman's, I'd say at the oven. The big, the one.
Is that going on, like, what's that?
It's only a week.
What did that sell?
Well, it was up for two fifty, it's now thirty fifty, I'll be shocked.
Oh, it has not been sold yet?
But I don't, we don't know.
Yeah.
There's a dollar...
Time to sell side of the...
I don't know if it's in here, any of the dollars for quotes in here?
It's a week, sixty, yeah, those are the events, cause it goes low key, like, um, used to be claims, and then right next to that.
So from, from low key, it's...
Two down.
Two down.
Oh, okay. Why?
Twenty, twenty seven dollars.
And do you, you pay once a month, so typically they would never?
I'm not surprised, I mean, ten bucks for one of those free time. I mean, that's a lot of money.
Ten bucks, what is that?
So then we would look at these once a month, and then next month, there were more, you'd have to...
Every month, I get a whole package.
Oh, well, yeah.
And then, yeah, then, Jerry, the other thing is, if we're looking for a few chunks of passing it, it was free, I have to give you guys, uh, old system bills that we...
Yeah, see, I didn't really, I didn't understand this whole thing, it's a brain surgery. It's, it's a real big deal.
Oh yeah.
But, the way you're flying it, also, actually, then it enhances the financing streams.
Oh, yeah.
Same time every month, so, so we gather.
Yeah, with people plugging, now, that one.
Yeah.
He's home.
Yeah.
Someday I hope to have housing in part.
I wish, I wish I had, I sealed this building with the village. And I, some of my friends said, I wish I'd made a run for my shit to get three phases of the house. I'd love, because a lot of the equipment I would like to have is three phase.
So you guys pay that, and then you get reverse five, six months?
Yeah, three, three.
So, as an...
What would it cost?
So when you're done and everything's fine, you see?
We would have to, uh, for all the, you know, the poles, the wires, all set together.
Yeah, yeah, probably at this point, I wouldn't have to, uh...
Yeah.
In fact, when Stapples were...
So when it's, it would be a then send?
Oh yeah.
This was where the bakery started. You know, I was trying to, you're gonna tell me, can I go, I think they were working.
They were, this is...
I don't know anymore.
This used to be the bowling...
This was the bowling alley, yeah.
This was the bowling alley.
Okay, that's right.
Too late.
Yeah, that's right. But, uh, Stapples went on and bought some, uh, used equipment, and it was still there.
I know.
At the time, yeah, who were probably...
I, uh, well, I have a three phase in next door, anyways. You know, we, in the ice cream parlor.
The ice cream parlor was here with him. One of them.
Yeah, it was here once, it was one, here once.
Yeah, that, that was after me.
Yeah.
I was next door. Lickety D's was next door. Mister Black there, didn't you?
Yes, yeah.
You owned it then, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about Taco Joe's?
That was at the, and that one was next door too.
There's one...
Contra was at the...
There's one business person in the village, anytime, in the other business, came right there. Joe sets up the taco business, all of a sudden, there's another guy selling tacos. Yeah, there's one, there's, my wife, my wife took on C-words chocolate. Spent her money advertising it. Also, now, another person here, Charles.
Hi Grace, who are you?
The spies.
Any kids go running?
The spies.
Um, a little bit, yeah.
Does, I think, same business.
Not that, no. Well, no. That's good.
I'm a capitalist, I'm not a hostile.
I know, we just said, out to our first. Yeah. It seems funny to see water on the... It's like, you know, it's like, just yesterday, over your kids.
All, the big are getting the basis, and the less competition, the case people, or, whatever. The less competition, and all of a sudden, less they intended they are to their customers, you know?
All right, I think we want to see them out there.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I don't need to hold it up.
I have a...
A guy came in the middle of the sun, he had cars, sports cars, he set up some place, all of a sudden, he's got baseball cards. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Everything in there. What's happening now?
Beats the hell out of me. Wednesday left, everything went to hell, obviously. You guys hear that? I'm joking.
Be nice to take tours of already, like, even the waste treatment.
What's going on?
Just regular, I mean, they're yours. It's hard to know what you're keeping, you know?
Everybody's doing it.
They're gonna, they're gonna, uh, bid award for the substation.
And we also have the, in the, in Asia, it has...
And then, yeah.
When do we get there? Two, no.
They'll, they'll knock about them.
Yeah, and it's a, ten hour wait, or?
Um, no, it should be shortly.
Oh, thank you.
George, for you.
I forgot it.
There, did you get this, Jerry, it's in here?
Yeah, I've got it, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jerry, I want to recognize our archive room, like downstairs, like, one.
Oh yeah.
We'll go two more minutes, I'll...
I had, I had seen that. As I say, we were here for twenty-three...
They own International, and they put all their trucks on.
I, I do archive, I, I've been archiving historical stuff, and I found some really neat documents.
It's crazy what those clubs call them. Well, I saw it in the last few years, I was in... The difference from year to year is almost...
How long was that? Then why did I write the letter?
I don't know, I don't know, but you said, it's in, it's in the historical archives. I don't know whether it was part of, like, the building.
It's taken us three years?
I'd love to see it, I can't...
I'd like to get it out, make a copy.
Yeah.
It was a really lovely letter about how long Kirk has been here.
I'm gonna say. Wow.
You can take it.
Yeah, yeah, my name is... But that's clear, there was special rules. They came and told Sharon she couldn't have the same shot, sign, on the sidewalk. This guy down here always... Yeah, it's just, I mean, really, big business.
That's the health insurance, that's a health transfer.
Yeah, what are your...
Yeah, so it's, there's a, uh, one for healthcare, and also one for...
They need her, take a serious...
Oh, okay.
Well, I think Uncle William has... I'm trying to stay, I'm, you got, you got... What do you ask?
Yeah, I don't get it. It's gonna be... I'm waiting for purple to...
This is the only one I've seen, which I checked for.
We hold on to check.
Oh, I guess.
Do you get the things?
Because it's not due yet, like, the rest of these were already...
That's, that's all there for.
Um, they'll be cut tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't blame you. So, two years ago, you had... Yeah, and thirty's here, nineteen.
Oh, thirty-three, one by night, I saw.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And then he got some.
Yeah, but it's thirty miles now, right?
But nobody does that, something else.
Jerry does. Jerry tells me.
Can I have a motion to come out of public hearing for the Digger Derek?
I'll make a motion to come out of hearing for the Digger Derek.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Obedience? Carry it. I mean, that's just finishing up with the bills, and she's finished with, uh, have approval. Is there a motion to approve the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, meeting minutes for March fifteenth.
Is there a second?
I'll second, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you're just different credit?
You must be Claire Boy. He must be Claire Boy.
Okay.
And then, of course, all of these seats that return would have to be approved, right? Thank God.
Well, I'll have a chance to, uh, look at the bills, is there any further discussion on that? Not, entertain a motion, approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Your second?
A second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Obedience? All right, then to the mayor's report, there's a lot going on this past month. First thing on, on my mayor's report is the, uh, Fast New York grant that we were discussing during the hearing. Tennessee County Economic Development Center is finalizing the grant to be submitted. Hopefully that grant is awarded to us. Our PLM is overseeing the project for the, uh, substation, they're our engineer. And they're furnishing, uh, Tennessee County Economic Development with the, the needed verbiage, uh, for the project. So as soon as they get that, that will be submitted, and hopefully awarded. Tennessee County Legislature, uh, has once again made available in their budget to fund professional grant writing services up to five thousand dollars to municipals on a first come, first served basis. They did this again last year, and we, uh, had Clark Patterson, we wrote a grant for us on that. And, uh, we, uh, we are looking now at grants that might be, might be available that would benefit the village. And when we, uh, find one, we will hire a firm to utilize that five thousand dollars from the county. The Clean Energy Communities Coordinator, Rob Richardson, has informed the village that we have been awarded a grant from NYSRDA in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And that's for clean energy projects, such as LED lighting, EV charging stations, and other energy efficiency upgrades. So we will be utilizing that ten thousand dollars of grant when also...
Our streetlights, LED now?
Yeah.
Are we looking at replacing the chargers, Courtney, or what are we thinking on this?
Yes, we're, I, uh, we talked to Power Authority the other day.
Okay.
So their programs are for fast chargers. I also talked to Tesla, and their programs were for fast chargers too, which, you know, one of them, you know, we don't traffic for those. So we have to kind of go the smaller route, and let that, putting more costly, Oscar, fast chargers for Tesla and Power Authority would have been free. For the smaller ones, we'd have to put in, and, uh, because we want to charge when we put the new ones in, we have to put the infrastructure to, you know, collect money or connect, uh, Wi-Fi connection.
The one at the park, no more? What was the history of that?
Couldn't get parts to replace, you know, it broke down, and Courtney tried to get parts for it, and couldn't get parts anymore. I, we met with the NIPA here, representatives the other day, and they said it's a pretty common occurrence now with these chargers.
The one I backed on his last leg, he only has, uh, the two chargers, and the one side worked.
May ninth is our designated community action day, we do this every year. We, uh, we have the seventh graders from Bynum Burge's Middle School here, and they help us beautify plant flower, pick up the village. And also to take part in our Arbor Day celebration. We generally try to plant a tree on Arbor Day, have the kids help plant, you know, sometimes more than one. But, uh, we generally do that. Tree and Park Committee met on Wednesday, April third, and, uh, two new trees have been planted in front of the restrooms in Hickory Park. Installation of the benches and signage and electric upgrades were the topics of discussion. And thanks to the committee for all the dedication, and special thanks to Renee there, and Todd's also on that committee. So, thank you so much for your services and for your dedication. and Todd's also on that committee, so thank you so much for your services and for your dedication. The Village of Burgeon, uh, was a, has received the Tree City USA designation again, it's our thirteenth year. So we're pretty proud of that. And, uh, Representatives of the Byron Burgeon Central School will be here on May eighth to present the, uh, school budget for the ensuing school year. We have a public hearing scheduled for April twenty-fourth at six thirty PM at the village office and that's for comment of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budgets for general sewer and electric. The Hickory Park restrooms are now open for the season. From the sewer, uh, I don't want to get into that too much because we'll be talking about that next month. But, uh, a letter was sent to all the residents explaining the state of the sewer budget and the need to increase the quarterly charge, which will require change in our sewer law, so. There will be a public hearing on this matter on May eighth at six PM, followed by a public hearing at six thirty PM regarding the village's acquiring of a small plot of land, mortaring the sewer lift station on Gibson Place. And as I said earlier, an application for an increase in hydroallocation of preferred power from the New York Power Authority has been submitted. And this is contingent on Oxbow International Building in the industrial park. And as I said, we met with NIPA representatives here on April fourth to discuss any matters of mutual interest and to see how they might better serve our needs. Uh, they do have an office now in Buffalo, I wasn't aware of that. I thought everything came out of White Plains, New York with the power authority, but they, uh, they have an office in Buffalo now, so. I, I told them, I said, uh, years ago, it seemed like things were a lot tighter between the, you know, us as a municipal and them. So now they're right there and, uh, it, it's good that they came in and, uh, we had a nice sit-down session here and, uh, just hashed over things of mutual interest and how they may, uh, better serve our needs in the future, so that was good.
Question on electric?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Paulie Bulyamo, he's got the Soss place up here, he's expanding, are we, are we okay with that? Or is this contingent on the expansion of the electric?
No, that's, that's good, uh, we knew that was coming. We, uh, purchased the, uh, transformers and everything needed for the upgrade. Uh, they had to put the bill on that.
Okay.
Uh, we, we provide the initial service to a visit, a business. If they, uh, down the road, they switch out and say, hey, we need more power now, then they're liable and responsible to pay for all that, so. It, it didn't commit any cost to the, uh, village and our labor and materials will all be reproved.
Okay.
So that's, that's all set. That's all I got. Courtney?
All right, um, so now I have my report and I'm sure you had a few minutes to look at it. Um, just a couple of points. Uh, but down at the sewer plant, we were notified, uh, the rural county water authority showed up at the water, uh, the sewer plant to talk to Chris, um, and they said we had, uh, had a, uh, big, big increase in water usage and they wanted to check on us and, uh, so come to find out, uh, there's a major, major water leak up there. Um, and there is, there's no signs of it. Uh, we went from twelve thousand gallons a quarter to two hundred thousand gallons a quarter.
That's significant.
They're significant and, you know, I walked around up there with Chris, there, you know, you'd think that would come to the surface or show wet somewhere, um, there, it just wasn't. Um, so Chris and I went through and isolated the area, uh, and, and found, you know, it's somewhere between the, uh, shut off by the, uh, what we call lazy river, but it's the, the ditch and the new compost building. So somewhere between there and, uh, it's broke, um, and we don't know how, you know, how that, we don't have it underneath the, the building. So what, uh, really the, the, we kind of go down to the building and we're not going to want to cut all that up because it's got heated floors. Uh, what we're proposing is to dig a new line from where, where the wire comes in by the MBR building around, uh, the backside to the, uh, the compost building. So we'll be able to dig it all ourselves and then just have Russell plumbing or whoever we choose to come in and make the connections. So the water's off of that area, we no longer have a water leak, um, but, uh, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. When I saw the bill, um, it was, the quarter was, you know, eight hundred and sixty dollars, so I'm not bad. Um, so it was, it was a lot, but, um, not thousands at least, but just want to make you aware of that. Also, um, in the bills you saw, one of the bills was for the benches in the park, uh, which is the second time you've seen it. There was, uh, some fraud occurred, um, we mailed a check out, um, somebody intercepted the check somewhere along the way and they took that check and then they reproduced it, uh, same check number, same dollar amount, uh, made out to somebody different and then deposited it. Um, so I contacted the bank and we have a fraud investigation going. They tell me that the money is supposed to be credited back to our account, uh, regardless if they, they find the culprit or not. So I'm hopeful that the word will be true and they'll get that money back. Cause, you know, it's all seventy, eight hundred dollars, so that's quite a bit of money to roster. How much?
Do you use the positive pay feature at the bank? It's where you upload your check run and then they have a process that checks.
Well, we've talked about it, but, um, we haven't.
It helps catch stuff like that. If they're matching the venue with the other.
Right.
Who got the money? I mean, if, if they changed the name, they've got.
There's a name on the check, um, and it's, the, the signature on the back is just initials. Um, in thi- this day and age where you can deposit a check with a camera, with your phone, um, and, and online banks, uh, you know, it's gonna be pretty difficult to track a person down, but, you know.
You wouldn't think so.
They have means, uh, I'm sure they figure out where the, where it was deposited into and go from there. So hopefully they, they find the culprit that way and that's a lot of money, so.
That's great.
More or less, that's happening.
I'm sure he'll get ringed.
So, uh, that's all I wanted to add to my.
I haven't paid the bank payment, I fixed twice.
Okay. Can you all have CEO/CEO report? Any questions on any of the officers' reports? Now, is there a motion to accept the reports of the officers?
I'll make a motion to accept the reports, uh, the officer.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next thing on, uh, the gender trustee concerns and for our new trustees, uh, this is, it, it is what it says, trustee concern, so if you have something, you know, that you see that you want to have addressed here, um, this is the time you would come forward with it, so. I'll start with Mike, do you have any trustee concerns?
I was just curious as to, I know we've talked in the past about two particular properties that have more than one unregistered vehicle, I was wondering if we've made any progress on this.
Uh, is Gary, uh, informed of the residences and is he?
I've talked to him about the one on, uh, Clinton. Uh, where's the other one?
You know, right on South Lake here, you have the rundown house there.
That came up today too, so, um, if he comes in and borrows, then we'll talk to him about it.
He's doing is people to see these things and, you know, the next thing, there's two warehouses and, you know, start a, a snowball effect.
Right, yeah.
People turn their yards into junkyards.
I would, uh, I'd like to look up the actual zoning law on that. I've, I've heard over the years, uh, three different versions of what you're allowed to have here. First it was, hey, you have a valid inspection sticker, and then I heard you're allowed one and then allowed, allowed two. So I, I'd like to honestly look it up, kind of look it up and see if they, what, what the zoning law actually says so we can enforce it.
I'm pretty sure it's two, but, um, we'll talk to, we'll have to look it up and ensure that, uh, it's the case.
Who enforces it?
Our co-enforcement. All right, is that, you have any trustee concerns?
I don't know.
Yes, Rob?
I have a few.
Okay.
One of the items that comes to mind is we have one bulk item per week for pickup. And I noticed there are some people that will leave a whole eight feet of stuff out there and then let them take one item a week and the rest of it sits there.
Right.
And it looks terrible.
I agree.
So that's, that's a concern that I have that everybody knows you take one bulk item and then put one bulk item out instead of leaving all your trash there for everybody to look at for weeks and weeks and weeks. So that was something that came to mind. The other thing is, and, and I don't know the history, but the storefront next door of here is just, you know, the, the, apparently owned by somebody in Churchville and it's, it's just, doesn't look conducive to a, a nice looking town. People go through it and see something like that and they go, ooh, wow, you know? So I don't know what the recourse is for getting something like that, maybe putting up a, a, a painted tarp or something that looks nice and it puts a false front or something up, but, you know, again, it's just, I don't know what the recourse is for something like that. But coming into this, I'm just trying to see what, what can be done. And then there's a few homes right on Lake that, again, the, uh, the one across the street from Danny Miller that is just looking just awful, you know, the trees half-cut and things, uh, just not conducive to, again, the nice neighborhoods and stuff, so. And it's our, that's our gateway, people go through nineteen and see all that stuff, so. That's what I have.
Good job, Robert.
It's, it's been ongoing, I know Anna tried, tried to to clean up that house and.
Yeah.
I've gotten Gary and said, hey, are there any violations there, what can you do? Same thing with next door here.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Start finding them.
You can't find them, there's no violation though.
So I guess you can't condemn it.
So is the reason that this is here is just for the rental and that's it, for the upstairs rentals, that's all they care about?
Evidently.
We've had numerous, numerous people approach them to sell it.
Yeah.
And people who wanted to fix it up and make it part of the main street for him.
Yeah.
Won't sell it.
Wasn't there even grant money given to the storefronts?
Didn't take advantage of it. No, Anna, Anna tried, tried, tried.
That was one of the issues too.
Get that cleaned out.
Might, might Saki offer to paint it for him?
Yeah.
Michael, by the paint, we'll paint it.
Oh.
He didn't, he didn't even do that.
Let it rain in there a lot.
Michael's gonna power wash it, get all the loose stuff off and, cause I was painting out there, I think, hit the painting.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll paint him, but he didn't do that.
Wait, did he disallow that or he just wouldn't?
He wouldn't buy the paint.
Tapestry, somebody painted a big mural like on his wall, they could look like a nice store.
Would he allow it if someone bought the paint?
I'm hungry, George. We'll be taking up.
I mean, at least he could do.
That's all.
Okay. Uh, okay.
So nothing we can do.
If you're not, if you're not breaking any of the codes, there's nothing you can do.
The abandoned house there behind Nice to Anna, is it, I mean, there's got to be, the appearance of it's got to be something that they, they can bring up, I mean. I don't know. It just seems that there, you just really don't want to have a place look so rundown that it's just.
Yeah.
An eyesore.
There's no safety concerns?
That could be an issue if, if the doors are open and people get into it, you know. Ken, when Ken Cooter was here, he, he did some things and tried to get them to do, so they, you know, uh, fixed the roof, uh, a little bit. Secured some of the windows and stuff, that's all, um, he could, um, force only codes that are breaking. Right now, they, there's three cars on property, so that's something you can contact them about. Maybe that'd be a, a segue into repairing to be, uh, whatnot, but I imagine they're not willing to go through and paint the house and, but they could at least seal it up and, you know, cut down the stumps.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure if they're willing to do that.
Is it, is it trouble?
That's a contradiction. You know the story, no.
Okay, under new business? Um, the substation transformers. We did get three bids in for the transformers. And, uh, you've got in front of you, it's pretty shocking. The differences in these three quotes. The highest was one point four four three, so one point four million. Uh, the next lowest was one point two million and then the one that, uh, we'd like to, uh, contract with was eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, so it's a difference of, uh, three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars between the, the next lowest bid, so it's, it's a huge savings. Our engineer looked at all the specs and, uh, the bid specs and, uh, he said by all means, uh, that would be the company he would go with. Uh, he's currently doing a substation for Penn Yan and they hired, or they contracted with the same company here, uh, for the same transformers. So he's by all means, uh, to go with, go with them, they're meeting all the, uh, bid specs. So there'll be no reason not to go with them, again, saving them three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. So with that, pending no permissive referendum, I would like to award that bid to Howard Industries for eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
These are transformers to be used now, not involved with the new substation.
These are for the new substation.
Oh, they are, so we're already buying, um, items for the new substation?
Yes, it's a year, it takes a year, Jerry, to get these things if you're lucky. You're a year out when you order these things.
All three companies, um, put on their biz specs, uh, the time of fifty-two weeks.
So is that part of the three point four million?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that bond has been approved, the three point four?
The bond resolution was passed at the last meeting in March.
Yeah, okay.
And that was based on the lower bid, the eight sixty-one?
No, that was based on the three point four, the bond resolution.
But the, okay, but the transformers.
Just a portion of.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it was including the eight hundred and sixty-one, not the larger ones, not the, not the higher bits?
The, uh, the original, uh, information from the engineer, uh, he estimated the cost at a little over a million dollars for this, these transformers.
Okay.
So they, they are coming in a little less than, he was suggesting, so.
Okay.
That's good, we're a little ahead of the game.
The bond resolution is a set amount, we may not, when all is said and done, it may not be three point four. But to, to the project, that, that was the number that was.
Okay. So we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Power Sales Group for 861,120.
It's pending, no permissive referendum.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
One second.
Pollings in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, very good.
It's coming under, so it's pretty good.
It's way under. Way under. Um, next is our reord. So, we'll have to run it through our reord.
Yep. Uh, so by village law, uh, near city village law, we're required to have our reorganization meeting every year. Um, we use the village board. We actually kind of set forth, uh, all the rules and regulations for the, and appoint people that, uh, we need to appoint for. So, uh, there's myself and, uh, administrator, deputy clerk, deputy treasurer, fire marshal. So everybody who's here, um, maybe.
I don't know.
Appointing your, uh, planning board members, uh, they have five of their terms. So Renee's term is up.
Okay.
Night, Jerry.
Good night.
Say, Jerry.
Frank, uh, Rosick. So those, uh, you know, their, their terms are stopped, so that's interesting, just what they do. Um, and then, you know, going through the planning board appeal meetings and have information about when they meet. The park, park committee tree board, uh, that's not, uh, necessarily in here, but we made a decision years and years ago to include that. Um, you know, important things like, uh, appointing the registered for vital statistics. That's something we don't do here in the office. Um, down there, so we're giving them, um, authority to do that. Zouariers, um, you know, get the, put them on the taxes, uh, so that's what I mean. My, really the only thing that changed in this, it's mostly boilerplate, great frontier conference of mayors. Uh, the only thing that really changed is, um, the, uh, some of the, the, uh,
Mileage.
The, the mileage is being won by two cents, one two cents, but the other ones, the planning board and the zoning board members, who were, um, appointments around, size that, where they play. Um, legal notices, uh, required to put them in a few places around the village and to notify the official newspaper, um, which.
Dating news?
The dating news. So that line of bidding and purchasing, days off, what we pay.
So, again, this was put together by?
So near council mayors, um, you know, have the, the template and then just.
And then locally done by village board?
Right, so you'll, you'll approve this and this is the rules that guys will follow. You know, have general procedures for meeting, how the, um, the, uh.
I just was wondering if we were supposed to be involved in this whole thing or it's just the approval?
Yep, it's, uh, it's, I mean, you're, you're approving it, but it's really yours.
Okay.
That's what the, the Nikon, you know, suggests, but you can change it however, but, um, it's kind of a help. As well.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss a meeting or something.
No, no. So we'll see the exact same thing next year. Um, mileage might change, it might not, uh, could be somebody, uh, different appointments here and there, but, um, really it's, it's, uh, just move from there and how they will change for the calendar.
Need a motion?
Yeah, is there any other discussion on it?
To the, to, are wages, are compensations shot in here or no?
Yeah.
That's, I was just reading about you.
Okay. All right, yeah. I make a motion to accept the annual reorganization meeting.
Is there a second?
No second bid.
Pollings in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Renee, we got a job for another year.
Yay!
You're appointed.
Have there any, ever been any opposition to that?
I don't think so.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, next is, uh, resolution. This actually should say 2024, are you recording?
Oh, yes.
Should be 24, year 24. Actually, resolution 3 and 4.
Do we have a copy?
I copied and pasted it from last year's, uh, did I make the change?
Actually, resolution 3 and 4.
3 and 4 of 24, right?
3 and 4, yeah. Of 2024. Okay. Resolution number 3 of 2024, the delegate to the MEUA semi-annual meeting. And, uh, what this is, it, uh, it names myself as the delegate, as the voting delegate at the semi-annual meeting for the MEUA. So is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh,
The mayor?
Delegate, uh, Mayor.
Is that delegate? Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Pollings in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number four is for the NIPA semi-annual. I should say, MEUA is a municipal electric utilities association that were an association, 40 systems. They were one of the systems in that organization. Whereas the NIPA is a New York municipal power authority and they, uh, another organization, um, I believe there's 37 systems in that organization. And they, uh, they buy our supplemental power when we go over our allotment, which we always do for the hydro allocation, uh, NIPA brokers on our behalf, uh, to buy our supplemental power that we need each month. Not a day ahead market, actually, pretty much. So with that, uh, this would name the mayor as the voting delegate at that semi-annual conference. So is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution number four of 2024.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, yep.
Pollings in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carry it.
So you're gonna be busy.
I'll be attending also.
Oh, well, you're busy too.
I know the meetings too.
Yeah. Get depressed. Actually, actually, there isn't any.
I don't go to those ones.
Next is the, uh, under the old business is the 2023, 2024 budget. If there's any further discussion on it, at this point, we will be voting on this at the April 24th meeting. So, I don't know if any of the trustees have any questions or on the proposed budget?
We normally do it on this meeting, but there's already two public hearings and, um, two new board members. Give it some time to get antiquated and look at the budget.
The question I have is, I know you went to the executive session when I was in the audience, um, for contracts with union and stuff, how did that come up?
We, we settled the contract with the union. So that's out of the way, it was a three-year.
Okay.
Contract. So that's all. Out of that, the wages are all reflected in the, all the budgets that you have.
Okay. And do we know the percentage of increases that we, or can we talk about it or not?
Uh, it varied, uh, it's three, I think 3% for the office staff and 3%, or it was more than that for the, uh, DPW guys.
That's five for DPW guys?
Yeah. They, they were brought up to where the town highway super, super, no, not super, but the town DPW workers are. Uh, we lost one of our workers because he went to Churchville for more money, so, and, and they're still making more money there than we're paying, but, uh, we, we did bring our guys up to, uh, market value.
With those increases, are there any tax increases to the village residents this year?
Not this year, no.
No, no tax increase.
If I, and honestly, the general budget is doing really, really well.
Right.
Right now, so, um, I don't foresee it in the next couple of years.
That was a big concern about making sure there was no hit to the village residents. You know, making sure there was no tax increase.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, you know, take these home with you and look them over and if you have any questions, can I hold the court?
Yeah.
And, uh, again, we'll be voting on that on the 24th of April. Privilege of the floor.
I have several things.
Okay.
First of all, we'd like to welcome the new board members.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And I'd like to know, and I think I asked this most before, several years ago, what aid is being given to the new board members as far as the knowledge they need to have to facilitate transforming into being a board member? I know there's a long learning curve there. So have they been provided with materials to prepare them? There's this meeting tonight and the, where the hearings, where they prepare for that. You know, what then is being done to help them out so that they really know what's happening?
Well, I, I've been coming to the last few meetings to get up to stuff and what's been going on so I can speak from, from my point of view, at least, uh, budget stuff, uh, I've been up on it and was, uh, they had it available for people in the audience and then I took them and studied them, so.
They handed out, there's the near council mayor handbook. So I gave that, how long would be local law and comprehensive plan?
So they get, those handbooks have been made available to them, correct?
Yes, yeah. And my door is always open for any questions or whatever, so we can sit down and go over things. Uh, and then the, the fall, Nikon fall training schools coming up in, uh, September. Uh, that's a, almost a week long conference of, you know, learning everything there is to know. So, you know, that's open to everybody.
Any of the trustees want to attend that, just let us know.
And anytime I get that email.
Take care of it.
Where's that?
It's like a.
No, it's in the classroom.
The classroom, okay.
See, like classrooms are served. Um, the other thing is when I get information, when I get information from Nikon for webinars, I should have a board. Need to have them.
Thank you.
So they get every opportunity to.
My other question is, why does there have been electronics speed sign on country road?
Why?
Yeah.
Well, the residents ask for it and because it's, people coming in off a swamp road are doing 60 miles an hour and we're trying to slow the, the traffic down.
Yes, they've been documented. I mean, there's, there's been enough of it to make the expense for the speed sign, and yet small block worth it.
Well, that, Grace, that was the last, uh, well, was the last, because there's one on Buffalo Street too. Another one where you come in off the country road and into the village, so.
I'm sorry, excuse me, go ahead.
So that's why they were put where they were, because of the 55 mile an hour coming into a 30.
But is there really that much traffic on Buffalos?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is there?
Yes, yes.
A lot.
We own those, by the way.
Pardon me?
We own those, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, no, I know how it's calculated. That's why I'm asking if there was enough, um, study behind it to, um, legitimize the expense, because I know here thousands of dollars. And so I was just curious about that.
I think there's a huge speed problem in the village at the moment.
Pardon me?
I think there is a huge speed problem in the village at the moment. I live on a street with five houses and it is like a drag strip, literally, like a drag strip. So I see it all over the village when I'm walking.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it's bad. I'm sure you do too, Todd.
Yeah, and I've got one of those things right in front of my house and I, I can hear it to you, probably six out of every 10 cars has got the lights in the red.
Yeah.
You know, so they're, they're going over the speed limit.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of frightening, honestly. I don't, I don't know how to squelch it.
Well, I was just gonna ask that next. How, how do you address the speed problem? Signs aren't working. What, what is the other alternative? We certainly don't want to see anything tragic happening.
Yeah.
They do work.
We tried to get the chairs and they, they've told us that there was a shortage of deputies and now they're trying to address that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we pay extra overtime paid to these officers to come out here. We can't even get them on overtime to come out here. Because, because they have a shortage, uh.
And you see them drive through at noon, 1 o'clock? I mean, it's like they're on their lunch break and they're getting paid for it. I haven't seen them, only in the daytime, a little bit, you know? And it's just off hours where there's nobody around, nobody doing nothing, no crime.
I agree with you. I agree with you. It is weird times that they are here. They were just here at like 4 o'clock.
You know, I want to come and you pay me because I'm here and it doesn't matter, there's nothing going on.
Monday, the state trooper was up by the cemetery. I saw him. He, he was sitting up there by the cemetery.
Oh, it didn't have him out there.
That was Monday. Oh, yes, cherry picking through there.
Hey, it's just like shooting, why is it, stacks in a, you better pop it.
It's not hard.
It is hard. And it's not just here, it's, it's every town.
It is.
It's people in general now.
But like Grace said, it could be tragic and that's what's unfortunate. Like, I have people come up from my neighborhood, come talk to me all the time about still the racing up and down the street. I mean, and it's like, how long is Mackenzie Street?
You gotta hairpin turn.
Right, and they, they take that turn and what if there's like a kid or a dog or a stroller? I mean, it's really frightening. They come right up off the sidewalk, they come right over it and, you know, I don't know what you.
Is there a specific, uh, specific time every day they're coming through from work or whatever?
It's usually in the very, in the morning.
You know, maybe set up a little, you know, tell the police, hit this one particular area, hit this one particular time every once in a while, because this is where it's going on.
Yeah.
They can't guess, they don't know.
Yeah. Are there temporary speed bumps? That's not good. Not usually. Is there a way to determine the?
Drive over the lawn and everything else?
Yeah, it's good doing on Rochester Street, they're cutting up into the parkways.
Oh, geez.
Running up everybody's lawns to go around them.
Yeah. Is there a way to determine the effectiveness of those electronic signs?
I think they talk for themselves, yeah.
I think they do help and they make stretches.
Give you that feedback.
It does to me. It gives me feedback.
Yeah, me too, yeah, yeah.
The people who speed are not speed.
Now, they're, they're, most of the people, you know, the, the, you know, followers of the board that run up when they go through it.
Yeah.
Well, I just had today, the reason I came tonight, of course, we'll get to that when it's my turn, but I wanted to mention, the reason I came tonight was because a tractor trailer truck loaded with all brand new cars sit by my house at least 50 miles an hour. Now, he's not gonna risk his license over that. He didn't know what the, I feel he didn't know the speed. He didn't notice the speed sign. Who would risk that to their livelihood?
Was he, which way was he coming from, George?
He was coming from Churchville.
Yeah.
And, uh, but I, I says, that's it, I, well, I'll get to me when it's my turn.
It's your turn.
Gotta go.
Oh, George!
Okay, George, your turn.
Is it my turn?
It's your turn. No, I got stuff too. Go ahead, George.
Okay, first off, Todd, I talked to you, I don't know, last season when you first got in about a bicycle rack. Did you follow up on that?
No, actually, George, I forgot about it, but I will look into it with the next parks committee meeting.
That's, well, I'm, we're talking about here in town. So if I wanted to ride my bike down here and, uh, and have beer, where would I lock my bike up? I mean, that's gonna, that's gonna promote people on bicycles. They'll go, come through if they can, I think I mentioned it to you once, Joe. Anyway, if there's one spot where I could go in and have a drink and I'm only into the Legion and know that my bike is chained to bicycle rack.
Would it, would it work if it was in Carpenter Park?
Would it, anywhere I could?
It's just so narrow out here.
No, you'd have to, you'd have it, I don't know, what's?
It's there by the fountain.
What about the big tree over here or this little park here?
There's not much room.
A lot of room out back, behind the building.
Anywhere though, I, I'm just bringing it up there because I.
I mean, as long as you can chain it up, right? Chain the bike and then.
Right. The last time I did it, I tuned it to Rusty, uh, fire escape out behind the Legion. And it's a branded bike and I don't want to get all scratched up because some drunk comes out there like me.
I wouldn't, I don't blame you.
I'd rather do it. So that was just, I'm about to remind you on that, Todd, uh, get the horses together. Can't cause much.
We'll have some discussion on that.
It'll promote people coming in, maybe stopping and buying something and not worrying about their, their.
You made me think of another thing for the park, that swing that we talked about.
Yes.
What was that called then?
For disabilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna look into a new swing at the park, you know, one swing for children with disabilities.
I think that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, we had a resident send an email asking if that could be a kind of question.
I get a grant for that.
Yeah.
I would think so. I would think so too.
So next, I'm curious, whatever happened about the expansion of the historical homes?
We were denied.
The grant, yeah, the landmark grant.
We didn't go for it?
We did.
We were denied, yeah, we went for it, we were denied the grant.
So it didn't cost anything?
No.
No, we wrote the grant, we did the grant in-house.
So that's all behind us now?
Yep.
They gave us the, the option to try it again, but we just elected not to.
I think that didn't, that didn't, just let it go. Okay, now, the real big, big issue today, where are my signs? You said you got some, they're the wrong type them, excuse me.
No, it's tar, we, we got them, I, I, honestly, I went to the DOT the other day and they got all these new stipulations, now they're saying you can't put them on wood poles and uh.
Well.
He was saying if we, they okay them, it could be stipulated that we have to take the other ones down because they're on wood poles.
What other ones down?
The ones coming into the village on nineteen.
Okay, that's, you know, here we go into the.
Are these speed signs or what are these?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been up for eight years, probably.
We have two more that wrong color.
Oh, yeah, they, yeah.
They let us put them up the wrong color.
You can't have the runner, the green on the state road.
Same ones.
Two hundred, two hundred feet away from the nearest other sign.
They have to be two hundred feet, so I gotta see if we can take that other sign down that's near your house. I got some pictures on my phone, George, I can show them after the meeting if you want to see it. Believe me, I'm working on it.
That's all, we'll get, we'll get there, if you work on it, we'll get there.
No, yeah, there's a sign, I think it's a zoning sign, I think the town put it in and that might be an area where if we could take that sign out of there, but you can't have two signs within two hundred feet of one another.
Well.
It's all speed signs, pedestrian signs.
Well, take one of the damn signs down and put that up.
I, I even asked, well, I was thinking to you, to be honest, I said, well, what am I sticking on private property?
Hey!
And he said, you can't do that.
No, you can't do that.
Nice try.
Because I was gonna say, George, can we have one, couple of feet of your frontage here and just put it there?
Hey!
No, you can't do that.
I'm sitting out there on my rocking chair.
Yeah. I said, no, can't do that.
We're your dryer.
That's a distraction to the driver. I'm working on.
Scare people.
Thank you, man.
All right.
Oh, what, no.
George, your turn's over. Now, go ahead, go ahead.
I got all three, I got all three. I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I went to the town planning board at the end of March and the Dollar General was on the agenda up at the industrial park. And the reason I'm bringing it to the village board is that there is a large discussion about the traffic on thirty-three coming out of the industrial park with the Hank Parker expansion, the Craft Canary expansion, Dollar General, potential Oxbow, and then, as you know, the village board has an applicant up at Virgin Sea Store, the Virgin Restaurant, also expanding potentially. So, the discussion at the town planning board was that they are going to ask the applicant to do a traffic study out of there because there is a large concern for the amount of traffic coming out of Apple Tree Ave in the industrial park into thirty-three, along with that crazy apple tree, et cetera, et cetera, and then we may have Quickleys down across from Pavilion Gift. So, I suggested to the town planning board that the town and the village maybe try to get together to, to push DOT into really looking at the amount of traffic coming out of there and what it is going to do to the town and village of Virgin, because we certainly don't want to have anything catastrophic happen up there and with all that traffic coming out, even with the construction, it's gonna be a nightmare. So I don't know whether, you know, we want to get with the town or what, but I know that Gary went to the town board last night, I don't know what the conversation was, Gary thanked the town planning board chair, I don't know what the conversation was, but I really do think that it, I mean, I know that we've done a study before and been declined, but we're talking about a whole different animal now. So I did want to bring that to your attention, that Dollar General is starting to move forward.
Why do we need another Dollar General? There's one in Churchville, there's one in Barton.
There, there, well, that was one of the questions at the town planning board and the, the answer is that we have a six-mile radius is our typical, Dollar General to Dollar General, we go up to three miles in proximity, so that Dollar General is going to happen.
That merge off of four ninety is already a nightmare.
Yeah.
I mean, boy, there's people coming off of that and they're not stopping, you know, you can, because I'm coming from RIT, I work and I come back this way and I'm seeing people just right in front of me, just going, I'm not waiting for you.
Yeah.
And I can imagine with a Quickleys there and a Dollar General in the same area, wow.
And it's fifty-five.
And it's fifty-five. There was, when my applicant went to, and I don't know where we're at with my applicant doing the expansion up at eighty ninety-seven Clinton Street Road, but there was discussion at DOT when the applicant went about the speed, that it was fifty-five, so it's kind of a bug in their ear, I think, at the DOT now, the speed limit there because of that expansion and they're gonna have to change some curb cuts if they do want to move forward with their, you know, development, but hopefully, I'm gonna go back to the town planning board next month and see, that was only a preliminary site plan, they have some work to do on the site plan before anything. I guess they went to the zoning board of appeals this week, maybe, for some parking issues, I don't, I'm not really quite sure about that, but anyways, just wanted to make you aware and maybe we can try to all come together so that we can.
I'd like to see the whole area forty-five.
Yeah.
Even nineteen, outside of a light coming in.
I don't know what, like, I don't know how that happens, but.
Well, even by Atlanta, I think it needs to be cut back.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, coming off of four ninety, I mean, I can't even get across when Liberty, a shift comes out of Liberty, can you imagine? They're, they're expecting thirty, thirty cars an hour, I think is what they said, up there at Dollar General, and that's without Oxbow.
Wow.
So, it's gonna be a big store, it's like eighty-seven hundred square feet.
I'd support any measure of, at least a brainstorm with the town boards or whoever to kind of discuss some of that and if there's a letter we can propose or something to DOT. I don't know, I, whatever, I'd support any of that.
Yeah. A few years ago, all the towns got together and talked with, they did do the study down there and that's when they restriked it, which I think it did help a little bit.
Yeah.
Maybe it was time to go back and do that again, you know, Apple Tree might need a light.
Yeah.
And they should have done a merge line from three ninety, because it's right in the lane.
Renee, would there be a possibility of, of, of a joint meeting between us and the town and having someone from DOT come and do a question and answer thing or?
I don't know, I've been working with, so Dan obviously is very limited from DOT, he's only there Thursday and Friday. I've been working with Zach out of the Henrietta office with my applicant, I, I don't, I could ask him, certainly.
I mean, that, that might.
I don't know if, Gary asked, Gary sent me an email yesterday, I think, and asked me about traffic studies, so I can get with Gary too and see if they're using the same contact, I did give him my contact, so.
Yeah, because obviously the village and the town kind of share the same interest in safety and everything else here in this location, so that might be a good idea to have everybody come together, you know, lay the cards out.
Yeah. Yeah, I can find out, Todd.
Okay, thanks.
Sounds good.
Anything else? Okay. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Question first.
Sure.
The GL period summary ledger, what is, what is that?
Yep, so this is information I give the board every meeting and just shows you where we are. You can go into it, you see all the lines match the budget and it tells us what the actual, it was a budget amount, so it shows you all the lines of where.
Thank you.
Could I squeak one more thing in?
Sure.
I see it took quite a while to get through the, the bills today and evidently I could have come fifteen minutes later. When we, when I was working with you guys, we came a little early to get that out of the way, because, you know, of course, we had a great chat over here, you know.
Well, hardly, George, we got new trustees.
I, I know that completely, that's true, but I just wanted to mention that, that for me to come in, you know, if Jerry wasn't here and Renee, I'd be, you know, bored.
Let me get on a day, George.
We'll come, we'll come in earlier.
We'll come earlier.
Not only did we have the public hearings, that's unusual, we had photos tonight too of all the board members for the website, so that was on top of everything.
I got you, I got you.
Different things happening that aren't.
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, Gary, thank you.
Good night, everybody, it was great.
Hey.
Congratulations to the new members.
Thank you.
Bye, good to see ya.
Good to see you, George.
See you later.
George, good to see ya.
Nice to see you, always.
I gotta go see him tomorrow.[1773.91]